I didn't get a chance to jot down the agenda. Is Ken with it? Oh, there you are. Ken, could you fill us in on the agenda? I'll call the meeting to order. And ask if anyone's recording. Seen. We got 19 people here. Okay, I don't see anybody volunteering, so guess we can start. Uh, let's see, what did I? This is something new. Uh, Ken, what's the first item we have up?
First item up is the revote of the recommendation, uh, based on the recommendations of town council on the annual town meeting, Article 16, local initiative program.
For those that haven't been following the chain of emails, the the vote we took that included Sam and Carl. They were not members of the board at the time of the public hearing, so they're asking that we revote that recommendation.
Hey, George, this is Carl. I'm okay with the agenda item. I didn't get a chain of emails. So I have no communication on this.
No, that's, that's fine. I don't know. I think it was just between Ken, Rich Bowen and myself, but.
Okay, okay.
So it's just you and I here, Mike, or?
Yeah, no much.
Oh, Richard. Richard with us?
I'm here.
Okay.
Nick, all we're missing is Michael Baptiste.
Yeah, he won't be here tonight.
Yeah. So I think the motion was for, the original motion was for favorable action.
Yeah, I think you should have a new motion and second. And revote it.
I'm sorry, which issue are we on?
The affordable housing initiative, the citizens petition, our recommendation on that.
Okay.
So.
Didn't we vote in the affirmative on that, George?
Say again?
I don't think we voted in the affirmative on that.
I believe everybody did but me.
It was a tie vote. It was a three-three vote, but uh, town council said that since Sam and Carl weren't part of the public hearing process, that they're, they were disqualified from voting.
Okay. Can we vote with just three people?
Yes, you can. That's a quorum.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Give me a minute.
Okay.
I'm trying to find, I, I just want to get the wording.
Ken, I can't find my notes from the last meeting. Can you tell me what the vote was as far as who was in the affirmative and who was in the negative?
In the negative was Carl, Sam and George. And in the affirmative was yourself, Richard and Mike Baptiste.
All right. So George, you're looking for, I make a motion that the planning board support Article 16 for the annual town meeting, a local initiative program around affordable housing.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And oh, first the chair. So it would be three, one, two. Correct?
It's only two, one.
Two, one. I mean, two, one. Yeah, sorry. Too many people here again. Two, one, two.
It's official then.
Okay. Next up?
The report to town meeting, there are some recommendations in the that we can publish before town, town meeting and put online. I sent a draft around to the board members. Uh, it deals with all of the articles in the annual and this, and this, and the special town meeting.
Oops. I thought, uh, may I, George?
Yeah.
I, I was expecting to see a recording of our, of our voting on these amendments in that report, Ken. Was that overly optimistic on my part?
The, the voting is in the, the warrant of the, of town meeting. The finance committee published, the ones that had votes on it were published in the, in the report to, of the finance committee to town meeting.
And Ken, I can't find that document.
The, the town meeting warrant?
Yeah, I, I looked everywhere on the webpage. I couldn't find it.
Man, I don't see it either.
I will say I had struggled finding it, but I eventually got it somewhere and I don't remember where.
Yeah. So I wasn't able to review the wording of the, of the recommendation in the warrants.
So, uh, Ken, I first thank, thank you for resending out all those documents and I did, I had not seen them. Just point a, clear up some confusion for me. You would send an email with the title, tonight's meeting originally that had the three documents in it? And then followed that up with a reply all that said it should be a short meeting. Is that how it went down? Cause I'm trying to figure out why I never saw the documents until I asked you to read, to send them again and you, and it obviously you'd already done it this afternoon.
I'm not sure why you didn't receive it previously.
Yeah, okay. All right. Not to worry.
I'd sent these out in, in other forums earlier on as well, too, when you were going through the public hearing process on the articles.
Oh, sure. I just wanted to make sure we had the latest and greatest.
When did you send them out, Ken? Did you send them out again, you said?
You sent them out just this afternoon as well.
I got the ones this afternoon, the three documents that you sent, and I have questions on one of them.
I think you're using the wrong email address for me, Ken, because I didn't get them.
Yeah, I don't see.
They were sent at 2:59 PM today. No, they were sent, yes, at 2:59.
The only, the only thing that I receive in the way of emails from planning office is when Sonia sends out the agenda. And that goes to my Gmail account. So if you're sending them to another account, I'm not getting it.
I didn't get the agenda from Sonia. I was, I just look every day to see if something pops up. So I didn't get an email from Sony.
What we have here is a failure to communicate.
But we're here.
Would it make sense to just do a screen share and go through these real quick?
That might not be a bad idea.
So, um, we're on the town meeting report right now. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll go ahead and share, Ken.
All right. It'll save me the time to pull it up.
Okay. Can everyone, can everyone see it?
So far.
I can, yes.
Okay.
So I wrote an introductory piece here on the apologizing for the number of zoning articles that are in, in process. Because it's been a year since we've had, it's been over a year since we've had a chance to, uh, address articles for a town meeting.
You gonna read that, Ken?
And I was, uh, what I was gonna do was, um, recommend that we, uh, if you agree to the content, to publish this on the, um, uh, on the planning board website. So that people can get a chance to read it before town meeting.
Okay.
And if it's short enough, hand it out at town meeting as well.
I, I don't agree with the content, so I have questions.
So why don't we go through each page? It's not, it's only six pages. Uh, counting the cover, five pages of, of text. Why don't we go through each page and, and everyone can comment as we go? Does that sound right?
It's okay with me. I have my notes.
Okay. So I think the introduction is fine.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Article 12, signed zoning by law amendment. This is, we've, anyone have issue here?
No, I think we've been through that one a dozen times, so.
We have. Definition of two family or duplex dwelling, Article 13.
No issue with that.
No.
Article 14, drive-throughs in the CS district. Article 15, setbacks for MJ marijuana labs.
Had questions, um, because I couldn't read the warrant. If we remember, um, last week when we discussed this, I believe Mr. Swenson, I think it was you, Rich, inserted some language that said all labs in existence before the date of the article. I can't tell if that language made it into the warrant.
I remember that discussion.
And I don't see it.
Warrant, if I can find the warrant. Yeah, but the warrant that, I know the warrant I last downloaded is at least two weeks old and it wouldn't have that change in it.
I believe the, uh, the regulation or, or that allows this exemption is site-specific. It only has to do with a lab within 1,500 feet of Dega School. As I remember it, is that, um?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. I don't remember that restriction being in the language. I do remember that we discussed that the reality was that that's the only one that existed.
The, I think is either in the statute or God help us, is, if it's in the cannabis control regulations, because with the wind.
Okay, but we did as a planning board vote to change the warrant. The language in the warrant.
And what was the language? Do you recall what that was?
Uh, I, I, only that, that we in, in said, um, labs in existent, and this is not, it's a paraphrase. And I can go back to the meeting, but labs in existence at the time of the warrant passing.
Well, I would have to ask if the, um, I wasn't there that evening. But had the warrant closed at that point?
No, I'm muted.
What's his sixth hour piece?
It's a gun.
I was gonna say, somebody get, somebody fed up with that meeting already?
That sounded like Sandy Slaven to me.
So I have a, I, I think I have a copy of the warrant and it's dated April 26th. We're talking about Article 15.
Yes. And, and on the 26th, that was the warrant. And then we proposed language when we voted on supporting the amend, or supporting the warrant or the article.
All right. Do you see it here? I want to make sure. Oops. I'm doing this right. This is the warrant I'm showing, I'm sharing now, annual spring town meeting. Not to be confused with this annual special spring town meeting, April 26th. Uh, Article 15. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as follows, amend the Article 390 by adding section 392 dot one to read. An exception shall be made for an existing laboratory adding independent marijuana product testing to its services. Issues may be authorized by special permit in the district in which it is located. And by adding a new section 395 dot one, talks to buffer zone, there should be a zero foot setback from a public or private school where the proposed marijuana establishment is an independent marijuana testing laboratory.
Yes. And that, that was the article we discussed and there was some language, I believe, proposed to, to amend, to just make sure it was absolutely clear existing at the time of the warrant.
I remember the discussion. I'm, I'm, I don't.
I did get a, a text saying that the warrant had closed, so at that point. So it would have to be made in the form of an amendment.
Okay. Then as long as we discussed it and everybody's happy with it, I just remembered the discussion and I'm satisfied with the clarification you guys have made.
All right. So we'd have to, um, you satisfied the way it is or the correction that you made?
No, no, I'm satisfied. We've had the discussion. The warrant's closed. We're gonna move forward. Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. We discussed it. You answered my questions.
Great. Next up?
Uh, is Article 16, the Wareham Village reinvent, uh, one reinvestment district? I'm sure most of you saw that, um, the work, the Wareham Reader Development Authority, in which Ken and I are both members of, have voted to recommend that this article be held for further study.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And that the planning board take it under their wing to, uh, continue the discussion on the article.
We will have to have a, another public hearing if, if this, if the WRA or, or anybody else for that matter wants to bring it forward for fall town meeting. We'll have to go through the public hearing process again and that'll be on us. So we'll basically be the drivers in the fall, assuming that happens.
Is the, is the recommendation going to be for further study and delegate a board or group to do that study or is it just to postpone or, or, um, pass over the article?
For further study.
It, I don't, Ken, I don't think that we, we did not discuss specifically who would do that further study. It's been assumed that the WRA would do it. So to be clear, the general feeling of the WRA, and I think it's fair, it's that you all understand what the sentiment was. I'll tell you what my sentiment was. It seemed to be fairly common with, uh, most of the members, if not all, in that, um, we felt that the words I used were, uh, there's a strong feeling of anti-change and distrust right now regarding, um, zoning changes that we're trying to make. And that came out pretty loud and clear during the HREOD discussions and town meeting vote. If this article were to move forward and be defeated, we would be in a two-year hiatus to make any adjustments and try to do it again. So, um, the WRA felt that it was critical that we do more public outreach and try to make sure that all, everyone's concerns are heard and listened to and responded to. Rather than, um, rather than risk a two-year hit on what we're trying to do in the village.
Well, I would suggest that the motion be made to, uh, place, send it to further study and delegate who will be studying it, whether it's jointly between the planning board and redevelopment or I think the planning board needs to be involved.
We, I had talked before about uh, joint meetings between the planning board and the WRA. And I think this would give us a really, really, really perfect opportunity to try that approach. So we'll carry, Ken and I will carry this message to the WRA on Thursday, um, which is our next meeting and, uh, suggest that the motion to postpone for further study identify the planning board and the WRA as cosponsors of that, uh, further study to, with an intent to bring back to the fall town meeting. Does that, I, I think that's a good suggestion, George.
Okay. Very good.
Good. Uh, endorsement of the master plan. I will speak to this at town meeting. Um, I had a presentation prepared a year, over a year ago. I will just be reading from it now, explaining that the planning board, um, did take the, uh, Serped version from 99. We updated it and we approved it as required by Master General Law. And we're bringing the master plan to town meeting for endorsement, not approval. As it already is approved and I'm not, I want to word that very carefully and I'm still working on that.
I, I hope you say, don't say 99 and say 19 instead.
Oh. Good, good, good catch. Um, and I think it's also important to, to comment that um, the document is dynamic and it has been in place for over a year, almost two years now and it, and there are opportunities to go back and examine it as we speak, which we should do. So that will be my message. It'll be short and sweet. If, George, if you, if you're okay with that, I don't want to, uh, step on your chairmanship responsibilities here.
No, that's fine. Next article, 26, we just spoke of.
Are we done with that one? I think we are.
Yeah.
Marijuana delivery, we voted zero to, zero to four, zero six last week on this one. It was unanimous, whatever it was.
Yes, but the wording in the document says we recommended the amendment. We did not recommend the amendment.
Is that one of those backwards recommendations? We recommended by zero, five. That's so, if the vote was to recommend the article, then it would be zero, zero, five. So we.
We didn't, we weren't endorsing it. That's what I remember.
And I, I may have the numbers wrong. I don't know.
No, it was unanimous. So whoever got the vote, everybody voted against.
Is that another one? Uh, that was the first time we saw that, correct, Ken?
Yes, that's right. That was the first time it came out.
So, so Ken, this, this statement needs to be changed.
Yes, it does.
This one right, this one right here. So can you take the action to add the word does not recommend or something to that effect?
Yes.
I went right past that, Carl. Okay, I'm moving on to Article nine. This is for the special. This is the flood pit plane management one, uh, the FEMA maps. I don't think there's any, I don't have anything to say here. Okay, let's go to the solar bylaw one and I have some comments here. I think the wording is a little misleading at ti, in, in certain ways in that while it's true that this article does not, uh, provide a full stop because proponents may file preliminary subdivision plans and preserve the right to develop their property under the existing law. That is a true statement. Um, the, but the point is, is that you, no article can do that. Um, I, this is a, it provides a negative when I think this article is a positive because it shuts the window quicker than anything else. Especially waiting until the fall. Um, and yes, subdivision plans have already been submitted for the, for, um, for implementation and they are, they will be grandfathered. And I, Ken, if it's true, I think I was told there's four of them on your desk now.
There's more than four and there's, there's more being submitted in the next couple of days.
So making it all, all the more important that we close the window as quickly as possible. So the last part there, so the effect of any of the bylaw will only be on smaller projects. I don't think that's true. Um, and I, I'd like to re-spin that wording a little bit. That's, that's my comment. Anyone else?
The, um, let me explain that the, uh, when I had written this one, it was for a potential negative vote, not a positive vote. So I can change that around to, uh, for the reasoning that you're looking for, which is to, uh, hold back on, uh, additional solar projects until a comprehensive review of the, an amendment to the, uh, solar bylaws made. Which will be, uh, submitted for fall town meeting.
Uh, just so people know, um, Nancy McHale and I, uh, spoke at the FinCom meeting last Wednesday. And, um, they did a revote and I believe, um, I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I'm close on the numbers, but I was, I made a pretty impassioned plea to them to understand what we were trying to do via the phase one and phase two aspect of this. And that we needed to close the window and then quickly come up with a comprehensive plan. And I talked to the, because people were very hung up on the finance committee about the, the super restrict, what they felt were super restrictive conditions around 10 acres and previously cleared land. Um, I explained to them that, um, there were multi, I said, I used the number four. Uh, subdivision filings already submitted and that the revenue impact that, um, people were worried about, um, I did not think would be impacted. As soon as we can shut off the subdivision plans, there's going to be plenty of solar farm applications coming in of the, under the old laws. And, um, I'm looking for impact in 2022, 2023 on this. And the finance committee switched, the original vote was two, five against it and they voted Wednesday night five to one for it. So, um, we've got a planning board of four to nothing. We've got the finance committee of five to one. Um, we're getting some momentum on this and, um, I want to be clear in our explanation that, um, we're, we have the positive aspect. So Ken, I would appreciate very much if you would reword that and I trust you to do that properly. I know you will.
No problem. Ken, Ken, we're getting some background noise. Could you take a quick look and see if there's somebody's mic open?
I was looking for that. I don't see it. Um, and, uh, no, it's still there and I don't see where it's coming from.
Well, I think somebody just muted themselves, so.
I just, I, I just muted myself. Is it me?
No, it wasn't you. Either way, problem solved. Either way, problem solved. I think.
Um, that's the end of the document.
Yep, okay. So we get some. Few minor changes to make to the recommenda- of the report and, uh. Be helpful to.
Ken, should we do those, should we do those changes right now? This, we've only got five days. We can't have another meeting.
Yeah, let's go through something right now and, uh. Get a, um, uh, qualified, um, consensus.
And ju- well, just the fact that, um. A preliminary plan has been submitted, in effect freezes zoning, correct?
Uh, if it's a preliminary plan, it's followed up by a definitive plan. And, uh, uh, goes through the process, then it has eight years of protection.
But I think just the fact that it's been submitted. Uh, freezes it for town meeting sake.
That's right. If they, if they submitted it in accordance with the rules and regulations, um. They, uh, they have, they've frozen the, uh, the zoning and the zoning impact doesn't, uh, occur. With whatever town meeting does.
I, I, I did a cut and paste from the document, um. And I would say that. Something like this may be appropriate.
Still getting background noise.
Hold, hold on, that's me. You're my wife laughing in the kitchen.
She's not looking for the sick.
All right, she's been reprimanded.
Um.
So I just took out the last two, uh, the last sentence and half of the next to last sentence and added this one right here.
Mm-hmm.
That seems to have the, uh, the effect of, uh, what you were talking about, the gist of the planning board's position.
People okay with that?
Uh, I, I think it's okay.
Yeah, most good to me, Ken.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'll. Go, go ahead, Carl.
No, it wasn't me. I was okay.
All right, Ken, I'll email, I'll email this to you right now, all right?
That sounds good.
Okay, I think we're done with the report to town meeting.
Great. Now the thing that I'm going to attach. The floodplain bylaw to this report so that, um. It's published in some document because it did not get into the, uh, the, the FinCom's warrant. And, um, uh, we want the wording to be, uh, in front of, uh, town meeting members when they vote on it.
So I would make a motion that the planning board support. The draft spring annual and special town meeting report dated May eighth with modifications to. Um, the marijuana delivery. Um, article and modifications to the solar bylaw article as discussed in this meeting.
So move.
Uh, motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Think we beat that up already? Um, all in favor? Richard?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Very good. Next up, Ken?
Uh, next up, if you want to, um, discuss it is the report to. Town moderator on the quantum of vote.
Can we put that up too?
I got it.
Okay.
This one makes my head hurt.
Actually, this was pretty, this is all, from my perspective, this is all, uh. Legal ease and, and, and stuff. Anyway, uh, can you see the, the, the header page here? Can people, am I sharing properly?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So, um, Ken, I'll let you walk us through the beginning here.
All right, so the beginning paragraphs just, uh, lay out that, uh, the changes in, uh, chapter forty-eight. Uh, that were, uh, signed by the governor this, uh, January. Apply to, uh, the, the, the work we have to do at town, as town meeting votes on these. Uh, town council has, uh, determined that, uh, based on the existing laws, the town moderator has the, uh. Uh, makes that decision on the quantum of vote. Um, but, uh, knowing that the, um, planning board will be. Uh, making regular decisions on the quantum of vote, uh, because forty, forty-eight also says that the special permits that you vote on. Um, have to be considered, uh, as to the quantum of, of vote, uh, because it's a simple majority if it meets the same criteria that they, uh. Uh, the criteria for the bylaws. So, um, uh, with that in mind that there, you'd be, uh, you'll be acting on these on a, on a yearly basis throughout the year. Um, uh, you should probably also be, uh, uh, assisting the town moderator and, and making determinations on the projects coming, uh. On the, uh, designing articles going to town meeting. Um. Uh, and the, as run through them, the, um, article twelve, uh, signs, uh. Is not a, uh, uh, one that meets the criteria, so it is a two-thirds majority. The definition of a two-family or multifamily dwelling is, um, um. About housing, but it's not a, um, doesn't meet the criteria for the chapter forty-eight, so it is also a two-thirds majority. The drive-throughs, uh, don't have anything to do except with drive-throughs, so it calls for a two-thirds majority. Setbacks from marijuana labs is, is, uh, specialty and it, uh, is a two-thirds majority. Wareham Village One, I think that we discussed at the last, uh, planning board meeting was the poster child for, um. Uh, action, uh, as a, uh, a simple majority, uh, with an eligible location, mixed-use development, housing. Uh, the increase in density in, of housing with the changes in the, uh, dimensional standards. So it, uh, it makes the case for a simple majority, but as you, um. Know, we've, um, recommended, uh, further study on that one. Uh, the master plan is, uh, comprehensive. It, it addresses things that aren't, uh, do, that have anything to do with the chapter forty-eight subject, so it. It's not really a zoning bylaw either, so it's not subject to forty-eight. Local initiative program is something to do with, um, affordable housing and accessory dwellings, um. The accessory dwellings is enough to, uh. I give it the, uh, simple majority, uh, as the, the, uh, quantum of vote.
Can I interrupt you? Can I interrupt you there, Ken?
Yeah.
Um, last week we voted on the WV-one redevelopment district as to, uh, the planning board's opinion on quantum. Um, I'm wondering if we need to do the same thing for the local initiative program as well.
You, you probably should. Uh, enough though, because that'll be the only one you have to do, uh, because marijuana delivery is a two-thirds majority. Floodplain management doesn't have anything to do with housing choices and the two-thirds and the solar bylaw. Is also a two-thirds, uh, obviously not part of chapter forty-eight. But the local initiative program is something that, um. Uh, could be, uh, considered for a simple majority, uh, uh, to the quantum of vote.
So do we know who can vote on this one or not?
Uh, it would just be the three of us, I would imagine. Although you didn't discuss quantum at the, uh. At the previous public hearing, I don't think.
No, I don't think we did either. I think, I think that, um. That, uh, Sam's definitely in and I, and I'm totally baffled that, even though I was an associate member at one time, I'm still baffled on. When associates get to vote or not.
They, they get to vote on, um, special permits.
Okay, so, um.
So, so, so Carl will be voting eventually on the quantum of, of vote. For the, um, special permits to come before the, the board, should he be on the, uh, one of those, uh, items?
But not tonight.
Not tonight.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, are you?
Takes me off the hook.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to entertain a motion?
Sure.
Um, I make the motion that planning board. Endorses, uh, annual town meeting article twenty-six, a local initiative program around affordable housing. To be a simple majority vote.
So moved.
Was that your second, Mike?
Yeah.
Um, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And nay for the chair. So we're back to two, two, one, no, two, one, two.
Two, one, two. I think you're through the agenda, George. I just have a question about, uh.
How about the, uh, did, you didn't talk about the, um. Marijuana delivery floodplain or solar?
Oh, yeah, you did. Ken, Ken went through that pretty quick at the end there. None of those count.
Okay, we don't have to take, we don't have to.
Yeah, you don't have to do it, Anne, those ones. Unless you want to vote all the rest of them as two-thirds majority and, uh, so confirm the, um. The results that, um, for the, all the articles. So voting all the rest is, um.
So all articles not previously voted for a simple majority will be considered two-thirds?
So moved.
Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Um, what are we doing with the new guys?
You got Sam.
Sam.
Aye.
And aye for the chair.
Two, four, zero, zero.
Four, zero, one.
Yeah.
There was no abstention. That was, um. On, uh, he, he doesn't actually participate in that.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
All right, what's next, Ken?
Uh, that's all on the, uh, the town meeting articles.
It's all on the agenda as well. Um.
That can't be right. Still have time to eat dinner, isn't it? That can't be right.
I, I do have a request.
Well, if it's something we know, we'll sing along.
All right. That's pretty good, George. Um, um, Mr. Clemmie's, uh, decis- a decision point on Mr. Clemmie is coming up in two weeks. Um, I think it may be appropriate to ask our, uh, building, our building commissioner to, uh, do a site visit. Before then.
He's already arranged that and is preparing the, um, report to, um. The planning board, which will occur at the next, uh, regular meeting of the planning board.
Thank you very much.
And. When is our next meeting, Ken?
The second Monday of the month is next week.
We've been doing so many meetings.
Excuse me, George, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What is that permit for? I've been to the site and it looks like it's all cleared now.
Yeah, what happened was the, um, the site was cleared and, um, uh. And didn't follow the, the zoning regulations that require a special permit for clearing of that much land. For no particular, uh, reason. Um. When the, uh, when the, the action was taken, there was, uh, uh, the, uh. Enforcement was to ask for. The Clemmies, the owner of the land, to submit for a special permit and, uh. Received conditions on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, action, the, the clearing. Uh, the planning board held a, a public hearing, wrote up, uh, conditions of approval. That essentially were the enforcement, uh, conditions. To, uh, uh, make, to, uh, to, uh, recover the, the, the property, uh, with vegetation.
Thank you very much.
He, uh, the question has been, uh, what, what is, uh, uh, completion of the action to restore the land? Or to, um. Condition the property so that it's acceptable. And, uh, that therein lies the, the, the conflict between what the, um. What the planning board has, has seen and, uh, and asked for and. What the, uh, Clemmies have, uh, done on the property.
I believe we, uh, he was instructed to cede it. I don't think Loam was involved, but I think he was instructed, instructed to cede it.
Right, he's supposed to put ground cover on there.
Thank you, Ken.
And he also said he would repair the road, which. He did not do.
It's a mess.
That's a, that's a legal term, yeah.
All right.
Sam and Carl, you missed a, um. An interesting. Planning board meeting when neighbors of the property, uh, came in and told us how disappointed they were in our enforcement of the. Uh, post-event special permit that was provided, so, um. This board has tried to take it to heart and unfortunately, it, this happened last fall. And there was nothing that Mr. Clemmie could do over the winter. And, uh, springtime is the trigger point and, um, we're all very interested to see that that gets cleaned up.
So, Richard, could you tell me the date of that? I'll go back and watch the, uh, meeting.
Um, I'll try to find it for you and, and, um.
Send me an email and I'll, yeah, I'll go, I'll go back and review the meeting.
All right, I'll try to find it.
Thank you.
Interesting part is, uh, you know, we kind of gave him an extension because we felt it was the end of the growing season. And I've seen other sites that planted grass after that that have grass growing. I think we were more than generous. The, um, that's, um. That's it on the agenda, Ken?
Uh, yes, it is. Um, there was a, um. Uh, a request that, um, uh, one of the, um, uh, items that came up in the last, uh, couple of days was the, um. Master Millworks, uh, site development. And they've asked for, uh, a modification of the, uh. Site plan. It's a technical issue. It's the thickness of the pavement. I, uh, I don't know if it's an actual, um, issue for the planning board to, uh, to take on. This is. I, I don't know if it's an actual issue for the Planning Board to, to take on. This has been reviewed by the municipal maintenance and the, and the town consulting engineer. So it may be something we want to make a, a call on as to when the technical issue becomes something sufficiently significant, we should come back for a modification by the Planning Board.
Okay, so this, this didn't make the close of the agenda?
No, it didn't.
It just came up. So we'll take that up at the next agenda as to whether it's a what sort of modification would be requested?
Yeah. You, you can maybe get a report on the, on the work that's being done on the site as well.
Anything else, Ken?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Gee, that's a record.
It is.
And I'm present too, and it still got over early.
I like that record.
Hey, can you mind if I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
By the way, I'm the owner's project manager of Master Millwork. I've been getting a bit of a, a runaround of how we need to go about this pavement request. I've been told, reduction request. I've been told that it needs to be submitted directly to the Planning Board. I sent an email last week to Ken Buckland asking to get on the agenda. This is something we're trying to do very shortly. We've done a cost benefit analysis. We've decided this is the best route to take. Our engineer has written it that way. According to the town engineer, we need approval from you guys, not the town planner. So I feel like I'm caught in between here, between the town engineer and the Planning Board, and I just need someone to tell me where to go for this approval, so that Charles Rowley can sign off on the inspection in a couple of weeks before we pay.
This is the first time it's come up before the board, so we're gonna have to sort that out for you.
Okay, I submitted this to Mr. Buckland back in, I think his last response was March 26th. We're over a month away. Talked to him last week about getting on this agenda. So do I need to do this again next week? Or what, what do we do?
Well, we'll have you on the agenda for, is it, next week?
The 10th.
Yeah.
Next Monday, the 10th.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll sort, we'll get it straightened out.
All right, I'll be here then.
All right. The, so motion was made and seconded. Richard made it. Was Mike seconded? Or was it Sam?
Yes, I think it was Sam.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Richard?
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear you, Mike. Mike wants to stay.
No, sorry about that. My dog came running in my office, so I muted my thing. Aye.
The, what did I leave off? Sam?
Aye.
Kyle?
Yes.
And aye for the chair. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you.
Vote early, vote often.